Meeting will be called to order. Row power please.
Chair Natale Gordon.
Here.
Vice Chair Conne.
Here.
Director Milken.
Here.
Secretary Davis.
Here.
Trustee Murray. Trustee Wexler.
Yes, here.
Trustee Leyman.
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
It's moved. It's for it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So can we get an approval, oh, I'm sorry.
Can we get approval of the amendments? And this was the April 24th close session, May 22nd, monthly and special meetings, and June 12th special meeting.
So moved. Is there one motion or two?
Just one motion.
So moved. All supportive?
Okay, so move and support it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Citizen participation.
Took me longer to get up here than what I have to have to say. I just wanted to thank the board for approving the contract negotiated and ratified by our membership. We're looking forward to three years working with a new contract that we think makes a lot of improvements and fixes more than a few problems that we've had. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, giving us that great news, that everyone is happy. Okay, written communications.
Harrison.
Okay. Now, we go to special reports, mandatory audit communication, Vice President Johnson.
Thank you. You hired us today. Michelle Mueller, who is the principal with Raymond.
Not Michelle. Yeah, she's here.
Michelle Fowler. Exactly. I'm very excited about Michelle. And so, Michelle is going to be communicating with the board critical things as we lead into the audit.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, good evening to everyone. And again, my name is Michelle Fowler. I am the audit principal for the Washtenaw County College Audit. Each of you would have received in your board packets the professional services plan. And what this plan does is it outlines all of those required communications that we need to make to the board before we come out and we start the audit procedures. So, I'm just going to hit the highlights as we walk through the document, and I'll let you know which page I'm on. But basically, what this does is it goes through, it highlights the scope of the services. Then we have the due dates as far as when we'll be providing everything to the board. Also, we outline the timing of when we're going to be performing our audit work. There's also some other key audit and accounting considerations we need to communicate. We will spend a little bit of time talking about some new accounting pronouncements. We have one this year that will be significant to the college. And then I just want to point out to you, in the back of this document, you have the list of the key contacts at Raymond to make sure that you have direct access to us as your audit firm. So, I'm in there, also the colleague principal, Tom Winkelman, and the engagement manager, Eric Dusma. Also, at the very back of the document, we are required to give to you a copy of the engagement letter. So, this would be the annual contract that we enter into with the college for the audit. So, just as a reference that that's there. Okay. So, we're going to go ahead and we're going to start on page one of the document with the scope of the services. No changes in the scope of what we're going to be doing this year. We'll be doing the audit of the college's financial statements. And then also, we need to audit the federal awards programs that the college receives. So, those will be the two things we'll be doing. So, we'll have reports for both of those. And then also, when I'm up here in September, meeting with all of you, we also have some other required communications that will be in another letter. So, it'd be management letter comments, those types of things. So, those will be the three documents that... As far as the due dates, if you could just please go to page two, and if you look at the top there, I'm just going to hit the dates that are going to matter to the board. So, the draft of all three of those reports will come to you no later than September 19th. And then I'll be back here for that September 25th board meeting to present those drafts. Then, in early October, the final reports will be issued, and then those final reports will be presented to the board at the October 23rd meeting. Any questions on that timing? Okay, all right. And then just below that, the timing of the audit services. We will be out here the week of July 16th to do our planning and preliminary procedures, which would also include looking at the student financial aid programs. And then we'll be back the weeks of August 20th and 27th to do our final field work. Okay. For the key audit and accounting considerations, which starts at the bottom of page two, and then continuing onto page three, I did just want to highlight at the very bottom of page three, item L. We have listed there as far as what we're going to test as part of that federal awards audit. We will determine that when we come out, that week of July 16th, and then we'll know preliminary there, but for when we come back at final. What's expected right now, at a minimum, we'll look at the student financial aid programs, that cluster. Okay? Right? Okay. All right. So, this is really where I want to spend the time, is, you know, talking about the new accounting pronouncements. So, at the top of page four, the very first pronouncement that is listed is GASB-75, which is post-employment benefits other than pensions. So, three years ago, the college needed to implement GASB-68, and that would have been for the pension liability. So, because the college participates in the MIPSers Plan, that statewide plan, the college is required to show a net OPEB liability, or other post-employment benefits liability, for its portion of that, starting for fiscal 2018. So, very similar to what had to happen for GASB-68, that was the pension piece of MIPSers, and now this is going to be the other post-employment benefits, or basically the healthcare piece. So, the college is going to take on another liability, which you will see in your statement of net position. And then also, there will be additional disclosures, so your footnotes are going to be longer, and there will also be some more required supplemental schedules, which will be in the back. Now, the thing that I want to point out, which we talked about back when the college had to implement GASB-68, the pension piece, for GASB-75, or the OPEB piece, this doesn't have anything to do with the cash contributions that the college needs to make to the Office of Retirement Services for the MIPSers Plan. That is something totally different. That's all in what's regulated, required by law in the plan. All this pronouncement is, this is just something that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board is requiring, and you have to put a liability on the books for the amount that is expected will have to get paid that would be deficient to the assets that are held in trust. So, I just want to make sure that you understand, it doesn't have anything to do with the cash flow of the college, what you're budgeting. This is just something that needs to be put on the books for external reporting purposes. It'll be a lot easier to envision when I show you when I'm back here in September, and you can see what the impacts are. So, but unfortunately, everyone's in the same boat, so all of the community colleges are participating in this. You've got the K-12 school districts are participating. They're all going to have to put their piece of the overall plan liability on their books. Any questions on that? I don't know if there's anything that management wanted to point out further on that.
Just that our estimate, based upon the data we received from ORUS last year, is that that liability would be somewhere around $40 million. So, to put that in current proper perspective, our current pension on a liability is around $116 million as of last, last year. So, we'll add another 40 to that $116 million.
Right, right. And it is expected that the Office of Retirement Services will be releasing all of the information that the college would need to go through the exercise to figure out what needs to get on the books. So, that should happen by mid-July. And then the other information that we require and need as auditors. So, we're hoping that they're going to stick to that timeline, so that that way it'll be very easy when we come in August, where we can do the audit procedures, and we can get those drafts to you in September as planned. And I haven't heard anything different on that. I mean, my understanding is they're still on track for that mid-July target date. Okay. Well, that concludes my formal presentation, but I also want to make sure if any of you have any questions or concerns as it relates to the audit, you want to understand better, if there's areas as far as how we approach things, this is your opportunity to ask those questions before we begin the audit.
Thank you. Because I probably will pull you aside, can you talk about it again? So, thank you, I appreciate it.
It is confusing. I hear this, I read it from MCCA, and it's still confusing, and what the legislature's doing, and appropriations are doing, and all the other rules, and they're still trying to figure out how, and how much, and how far back should we go, and, I mean, this is really confusing.
Right. And that is actually a separate issue from what needs to be done for this accounting pronouncement, but you're absolutely right, there's a lot of demands that are being put on the participating employers in the statewide plan.
Exactly. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing all of you in September.
Okay, have a good one.
Okay. HLC Assessment Academy Update, Vice President Hearns and Dr. Morrison.
Good evening. The trustees will recall that in April, at the board meeting, you heard a report on curriculum and assessment of student learning outcomes. An important part of that work is our participation in the Assessment Academy through the Higher Learning Commission, which is our institutional accrediting agency. We are now, as of this June, halfway through our academy work, and we wanted to use this time to provide an update on our work thus far that is a little more detailed than what you heard back in April. So, HLC and quality improvement. Both quality improvement and assessment are things that are expectations for institutions by the Higher Learning Commission. The Assessment Academy is one option for a quality initiative that institutions can choose for pursuing both of these. And this is what we chose to do about two years ago. It is a four-year commitment. One of the advantages to the Assessment Academy is that it's cohort-based, which means that we work with like institutions that we can communicate, learn from, and share best practices with. And because this is through HLC, we also have access to experts and resources and mentors that we might not have the opportunity to have access to otherwise, including experts who've come to campus and worked with our faculty here. The focus with a quality initiative like this is broad scope and institutional effort towards improvement, and really looking for broad faculty engagement. This is really a venue to provide an opportunity to engage across campus in improvement. So, I'm going to turn it over to Vice President Hearns to give you kind of updates on what's happened to date thus far.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So, some of this, you all heard at the April meeting, but just a couple of highlights of the work that has been done from the Assessment Academy group. We did a lot in regards to faculty development. So, two falls ago, we brought in someone from the Assessment Academy. We had work sessions with the faculty. We had some professional development around that. And then this past November, we actually did a faculty survey, that I'll be highlighting some of the answers from that survey in a minute. The first year, we showed a lot of increase in course assessment. And then this last year, we dedicated a lot of our focus on program assessment, so a lot more faculty got engaged in program assessment. And I'll also talk about gen ed assessment later on. But what we really were excited about is the faculty engagement, how many faculty engaged in assessment work, both course and program assessment. And then in that April meeting, you also saw a copy and a brochure of an HLC Annual Conference poster presentation that was done by our faculty-led team. And so, one of the things that we really focused on was that change in culture as it relates to faculty's opinions and perceptions about assessment work. So, right here, there's a ton of numbers, but I think the most important thing is that we asked the faculty some questions at our November faculty meeting in regards to their perceptions about the assessment work that they had been doing. And so, if you notice, on the left-hand side, there's a lot more answers in the "agree" and "strongly agree." And so, what we really want to focus on is how many faculty are engaged in assessment work, and how much of that work is meaningful to the faculty, and what happens in the classroom. And so, you'll see, you know, like I said, on the left-hand side, a lot of those questions that were positive questions about opinions regarding assessment showed up in the "agree" and "strongly agree" columns. So, we actually attended the midpoint retreat in Chicago with HLC earlier this month, and one of the key things that came out of that retreat was that we built our annual plan, not just for the first, for the next fall coming up, but for the next two years. Because as Julie said, we have two years left in our Assessment Academy work. So, we've actually had some transition in the committee structure for our Assessment Academy team, but I'm excited that we're able to now build on the leadership of our committee that started off with the first two years, our assessment chair, so the current faculty assessment chair is on that committee, and we also have representation from each of the divisions. So, there's a faculty member from each division, and instead of having one person lead that assessment team, all of the faculty who are on the committee have equal stake and equal responsibility in the work that we need to do over the next two years. One of our key goals is to really build off our momentum. We've had a lot of success in getting faculty engaged in assessment, both program and course assessment. I also note here that the Teaching and Learning Center, which we got off the ground this last fall, has played a big part in us organizing and scheduling work sessions and training for faculty to get engaged around assessment. This past winter semester, we also got all of our general education requirements updated and aligned to the appropriate courses, because we know that in the fall, we did change our general education for the whole college. So, what we came up with were three priorities for the next year, and those will take us through the two years that are left in the Assessment Academy, is one, we want to get our general education assessment completed this next year, and we want to focus on more program and course assessment. And I think it's important to note that those three priorities are in order of what the faculty will be working on, starting in the fall. And so, finally, I just kind of want to highlight, you know, one of the things that we focused on in our Assessment Academy work is really thinking about assessment as a high-impact strategy for the classroom. So, when we think about the main thing that we do here at the college, teaching and learning, assessment is something that's going to be a quality initiative for faculty to constantly be reflecting on what's happening in the classroom. So, here's some feedback from the faculty in the right-hand spaces of the survey that we did in November. Some key things to note is that a faculty member even noted that they enjoyed the process. I think the second and third bullet highlight that the organization and the opportunities at in-service, and the things that came through the Teaching and Learning Center in collaboration with the Assessment Academy work really made a big difference in providing faculty with support and opportunities to work on their assessments. And then they also note that it's nice to see that we're using our assessments, or the assessments can be used by many of the programs for their accreditation. So, a lot of our programs are accredited from other agencies, and they can use that work for those accreditation. And someone even notes that assessment is very important, and I think most importantly, they see a change in culture of assessment at the college. And again, that was one of the key outcomes of the Assessment Academy work that we've undertaken over the last two years, and will continue this coming fall.
Great.
Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Sounds great.
Sounds great.
Both of you. Dr. Morrison and Dr. Hearns are really doing a good job, and along with your team and members from the faculty, you're doing great. Thank you so much. Kudos to everybody. Now, we go down to the Master Plan Process Update. Dr. Morrison and Stephanie Comey.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time this evening. We wanted to just give an update on where we are with the master plan. We mentioned this last month, last month's board meeting, but wanted to go into a little more detail tonight. As you know, we have contracted with the Albert Kahn Group to assist us in this process. And as you know, my master plan is intended to allow the campus and our community members to spend some time thinking about what changes are going to be taking place over the next five to 15 years with our students, with our community, and what the needs of our employers are as well. So, it's really a visioning opportunity, and an opportunity to really lay a framework for our future. In addition to the Albert Kahn Group, they're based in Detroit, they were chosen through an RFP process, we also have a master plan working group. It includes trustees Davis, Milliken, and Fleming, so thank you for your participation. It also includes faculty, staff, and students. They are intended, this working group, this internal working group, to be champions and help facilitate input from across our entire campus and from across the community here in Washtenaw County. The conversations and the input that we're going to be gathering from community members and from our campus community are the master plan principles. They're on the right-hand side of this slide. Also, in your packet tonight, you should have a one-pager that gives a fuller description of these principles. You also have in your packet an environmental scan, which is a document that Dr. Morrison authored. It's a really interesting read about all the changes that we are going to be seeing in our county. The changes in our student population, the demographics of our workforce, and the changing employment landscape as well, in our county. And that information, as well as this video I'm going to show you, were provided to the larger campus just last month, before school let out. Dr. Blanca sent an email to all the campus notifying them of the master plan process, and that we'd be kicking off opportunities for anybody on campus to become involved and provide input later in the summer, in service in August. And Julie will be getting into more detail on that process. So, I'm going to show you the video that we sent out to the campus community. I do want to note that, well, it says it was, this is the latest updated version of this video, but some of the data is actually already out of, it's already a little old, needs to be updated again, but I think you'll get the point.
So, where we are in the process right now, and this slide is actually borrowed from our friends at Albert Kahn Associates, and I think it's a good graphic of, I'm sorry.
Say one thing before...
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
The reason we shared this with the board, we've looked at this video ourselves several times, and you just realize what a big responsibility we have. And the fact that we always knew that, but we're making decisions and recommendations for our future that is changing right as we speak. I mean, we're in it right now, obviously, things are happening. So, when we talk about the master plan, really, I don't know what that's going to be like. I mean, I have an idea, but we have ideas what it might be, but there's going to be a lot of thinking that goes into it. And we really would like quality thinking, our best thinking, every one of us. And so, the information that Julie has shared in this research that she pulled together for us, and this "Did You Know?" YouTube video, which there are many, many more available, and any single thing that you read at all would be very helpful for when we have discussions about the master plan. Because we, it's about how will students learn in addition to who is coming here? You know, in terms of, are the high school students, what's the enrollment like of high school students coming to a college? What, how about the adult population? What do we see? What do we really see as facilities, and what do we want to attain? We're not going to be talking about instruction here, other than the fact of a classroom that has to be flexible, you know? And that, of course, we're going to get input from everyone on what that means, but we're not going to be creating some instructional plan or deciding the future of the college. But what we are doing is developing a master plan, which is a facility, but it's also too... technology, because a master plan now is more than mortar and bricks. So, or bricks and mortar, that sounds better. So that's why we share, we started it with this video, with this YouTube video, just so that we could open our mind as we go through this whole process. Okay, Julie, that was your drum roll.
Sorry about that. So this slide is from our friends at Albert Kahn, and it sums up really nicely what the process looks like and what President Blanca just said, leads into that nicely, because we're in the discovery phase right now, as well as the inventory and analysis phase, which I'll talk about in a minute. But the discovery phase is all about thinking future-forward, and that's why we sent out this environmental scan, that's why we sent out this video, and that's why we'll be getting all this input internally and externally. And this working group that Stephanie mentioned is really important in that, in their role helping to facilitate and also kind of champion the process and encourage people to participate. We'll be kicking that process off in August. Before that, we've already sort of tested the process out. We had a retreat with the executive leadership team a few weeks ago, the representatives we have that we're working with at Albert Kahn attended. And we did two things. We went through the environmental scan and went through the various topics that are in there and sort of brainstormed what we thought all of those things might mean, things like the job trends and demographics, high school and college enrollments, and educational technology trends and design trends. And then the representatives from Albert Kahn kind of led us through a test workshop. So we knew what this process would be like with the faculty, staff, and students and community members. So we learned a lot going through that process, and it's helping our partners at Kahn when they come back and do this, so that they have a better feel for how to work with us. In August, we'll be kicking this off at August in-service, going through the process and encouraging people to, you know, think, be forward-thinking and be thinking in discovery mode. We will be having at least five workshops open to faculty, staff, and students. These are conversations incorporating all five of those master plan principles that Stephanie had up earlier that are also in your folder. And we are also planning on having a session for the Board of Trustees. We're proposing to do that at some point during your September board meeting, which would also be facilitated by representatives from Albert Kahn. And then we plan on holding external community conversations with our foundation board, alumni, and area nonprofits. So the goal is to get as much input as possible to inform this process. The inventory and analysis phase, that is something that Albert Kahn is really doing. I mean, part of it is they're looking at the environmental scan, but they've also already looked at our facilities on campus in a great amount of detail. They've looked at our deferred maintenance, they've looked at our space utilization study. They're pulling all of this together as they work with us and start to formulate possible ideas, which brings us to idea generation, refinement, and documentation, and also a broad look at the schedule going forward. You have a more detailed timeline in your folder, but the broad schedule, September and October, we'll go through our workshop sessions and get input. And in November, we'll be reviewing those results, Albert Kahn will be reviewing those results. And through November and December, they will be participating in idea generation. That's something Albert Kahn refers to as developing concepts that they will bring back to us for review. In December and January, we'll be reviewing those. In January of 2019, there'll be an open house for anyone on campus to come and give input onto some proposed designs. And then they will be, take that back to draft a master plan, and they will come back again in April to get further input before delivering a final plan. So there are multiple points along the way at which people across campus and the community can provide input. Are there any questions?
Yes.
In November and December, it says meet with Albert Kahn. Who meets with Albert Kahn?
There will be probably the leadership teams, but also we'll have multiple opportunities. That's as they're doing their development, in their development phase, and we're not sure what they're going to need at that point either. So some of that is what they come to us and ask us.
For reviewing workshop.
Yeah.
So we're going to meet with somebody. It'll be fun.
This is just a, this timeline is a work in progress.
The timeline is definitely a work in progress. We're very focused at this point on the input gathering phase, because that is really critical to this, and there are no wrong answers to that, you know, to this discovery phase, which gives people an opportunity to really think out of the box.
Okay.
I just was going to ask, explain, what is this idea generation?
Idea generation is taking all of the feedback and input that Albert Kahn will get from across campus and the community, and coming up with some conceptual plans for review.
Got you. Okay. Forgot it. Yes, did you have something to say, Dr. Rose?
Oh, I'd like to hear your input. I know you've been through this before. I don't mean to put you on the spot, to you, but trustee Landau and trustee McKnight-Morton, you have been through this.
Yes.
So, does this make sense?
Yeah, it makes perfect sense.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, and I was thinking that too. We had this before, but it's quite different, and that's fine for me to see the difference, because it was a little bit more spatial and buildings, brick and mortar thing. And so this is totally different now, and in what you're doing, because when we did it, it wasn't so expansive. There was some input, but not like this. It wasn't, it was all inclusive for everybody, and ideas like you're bringing out in multiple meetings and trying to get some input from everybody, and it wasn't like that before. So I do like, I like this model, and I think the more that we start hearing about it, because this, right now, it's just on paper, but the more you start doing it, and the more that we hear about it, I think we'll be able to really grasp where this is going with the master plan. Because you already started with three board members.
And me, Madam Chair. So even though we said it's not just, it's not just brick and mortar, there could be brick and mortar.
Sure.
I mean, it depends what we find out, you know? We, who knows? We might want to build a dorm, we might, I'm making this up, so please, this is, don't say the president said.
Well, we talked about that.
You know, we might want to expand WTC. We might want to do other things. I don't know, but we just need, all of us want to keep in the forefront the changes that are happening when we make these decisions.
Sure.
So it could be brick and mortar.
Sure. And that was brought up, because, I mean, the ideas that we had at that time was, from my experience from attending to conferences, the national conferences, and seeing where other institutions have done the domitories and how they did that. And so I, you know, I mentioned and brought back information about that. We have, we have the property, it's just a matter of how we want to utilize the property. We have, you know, people that can pull it together, so. But I think trustee, no, that one, had his hand up.
Well, I appreciate seeing the process that you envisioned, and I realize this is fluid. The sooner we can attach dates to some of the things that you envision up there, the more it'll assist our planning so that we can all be a part of this.
Any other comments? No? No more? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Very interesting. Okay, we'll go down to monthly reports, personnel matters, monthly personnel recommendations. This is an action item, that's tab D. And the, this is approval of personnel recommendation. Are there any questions? I said approve the personnel recommendations as listed, is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Support? Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any questions? No. All in favor? We almost said that. I just want to say, make a comment, full-time ending employment, Loretta Clibby. She had 28 years of service here at the college. I wish her luck in her retirement. It's great to see. And there's another one here in human resources, Cheryl Daniels. She's employment coordinator, time at, what, 36 years of service. So, you know, people have been here for a length of time, and I, you know, that's really good to see, that they're moving on with their life besides WCC. And we will go to, where am I here?
WTC.
WTC. This is the appointment of 2018, 2019 salary adjustment for the president and chief executive officer. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
And this is an action item. Is there any discussion? It says that after reviewing current Michigan Community College Association presidential compensation comparison data and recognizing that last year's one-time deferred compensation payment equal to 5.6% of the president's annual salary would not be renewed, the Board of Trustees extend the appointment of Dr. Rose Blanca as president and chief executive officer to June 30, 2021, that her 2018, 2019 salaries be set at $220,785, that she receive a $13,000 increase to her existing miscellaneous expense annual payment, that she receive an annual retirement annuity payment equal to 6.1% of her annual salary, that she receive an annual supplemental retirement account plan payment equal to 6.1% of her annual salary, and that the chair of the Board of Trustees be authorized to sign a contract with Dr. Blanca on behalf of the board. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call. Excuse me.
No, I just wanted to say that in the discussion, I think that we had, the most persuasive information for me was the current Michigan Community College Association presidential compensation comparison. It's something we use for a lot of other salary conversations, and it was important to see that this time.
Thank you for saying that, and it's so true. It was an eye-opener. Anyone else have anything to say? Okay, roll call.
Chair, please.
Yes.
Vice Chair, please.
Yes.
Speaker, American.
Yes.
Secretary, Davis.
Yes.
Trustee, Hatcher.
Yes.
Trustee, Lee.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
Going to tab D, 2018-19 independent staff salary range table. The Board of Trustees approved the 2018-2019 independent staff salary range table as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Sir.
I have a question about, I guess it's about authorized strength, but also about the number of temporary and outside-funded positions in this category, independent category, and wondering where they appear in terms of these, the salary range. The technicians and secretaries are 101 to 103, the professional and managerial are 104 to 109, and the deans and ABs, Ps, and BPs are the rest. But there are about 50-some temporary and outside-funded administrators, and I just wonder where they fall in that category. Do we know? Are they professional and managerial? Are they technical and secretarial? Are they all over the place? Do you see what I'm saying? Does anybody understand what I'm saying? Nobody understands.
I can answer that, or maybe you can help me.
Sure.
And I'm not sure if this is what you're asking, so help me. It depends on where the need is.
Yeah.
So, and it sounds so evasive to say it this way.
No, but I.
But it could be all over the place, and they, because it could be a, they're temporary, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, and a lot of times for some of these positions, we really need to think about the position, and if it's something that we can, we really believe that we're going to need on a long-term basis because of all the changes that happen. And so, that's why they're temporary.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, it sort of does answer my question, except that I noticed a steady increase in the number of temporary and outside-funded position, independent positions.
If I may.
Yeah.
Are you referring to, are you talking about contracts?
No, I'm talking about independence.
Independence.
Sometime, vote for an organization now, that's, we need that for flexibility. And one thing we try to make sure, at least I try to make sure, I mean, all of us, but I'm going to speak for myself here as a president, I want to keep my staff as whole as possible and make sure that, you know, we can keep a strong college, all our employees, strong base, and sometimes there's new jobs that we're just not sure if that's something that's going to catch on, or if it's something we should do. And if it is, then we'll make it a permanent job, we'll put it into a permanent job. So I don't know if that makes any sense, but the flexibility is really helpful in the independent area.
Well, I just noticed that in the.
Yeah, but you're right.
In terms of authorized strength, one of the ways we balance our budget is not filling positions, but it seems that in the independent category, we not only are full in terms of authorized positions, but we have even 50-some extra.
That's a good point.
Non-authorized positions. So we're not saving any money there, that's my other point, but I'll bring that up when we do the budget.
Well, if I may, I'm not sure, just want to clarify, are we talking about grant-funded positions?
Grant and temporary, absolutely. Grant would be paid by somebody else.
Exactly. So we do have a number of those positions, and so in fairness, it is kind of a myriad of positions that are reflected in there. And as that video, you know, suggests, yeah, are we going in different directions, and do we have jobs that have evolved to, you know, support the initiatives that we're working on? Absolutely, that's the case. Just wanted to be clear, if you were talking about agency positions or?
I'm talking about all that are not part of authorized strength.
Okay.
Which includes grant-based positions as well. I'm just saying that growing, rather than a consideration of what authorized strength really needs to be in the independent area. We don't have this in terms of clericals, or maintenance, or faculty. It's all in independence, and it's growing. I mean, there used to be, in 2015, there were 48, and now they're almost 60. So do we need to have a conversation about independence and what the authorized strength is?
I, well, that's a good question, but as the president, I, we need the flexibility to be able to address certain areas when we need them, and that's how we can use the independence. And you're right, like, for example, we have a couple of grant positions where we, you know, outside-agency. outside agencies actually pay for them. I don't know if the authorized strength for independence is a good idea, I'm not sure, because of how things are changing.
It's a conversation we've got.
Yeah.
Because we've had authorized strength for all the categories.
That's a good point.
For 30 years.
You bring up a good point.
And I just wonder what's happening.
Yeah. No, you bring up a good point.
Something that we could talk about.
I will say that from a budget perspective, we budget for all the categories, including for temporary positions, for what President Belanca said, that you have a specialized need that arises, you budget for. And we have a number of vacancies that occur from a budget perspective in all categories, and including the temporary positions. So, we are running vacancies, budgeted temporary vacancies, just like we do for authorized strength, say for independent staff, or faculty, or OPT, or custodial maintenance. It's across all the categories that we have vacancies.
So, they're not excluded?
Correct.
So, they're not excluded.
I just see an enormous growth in that flexibility. Needed, fine, I just noticed the growth. I don't see a growth in OPTs, I can understand techno, I don't see a growth in custodians. And if we have more bricks and mortar, we might have to see that. We tend to build buildings and not change the number of people who are taken care of, ever.
But I thought we had a lot of custodians, though. I thought we had a lot of.
We're still under authorized strength of custodians. Raise the questions, someone would have to discuss it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up for me. Okay. Lost my train of thought here. This is a roll call, thank you.
Chair McKinnon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Secretary American?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Okay, we're going down to tab E. The 2018-2019 Independent Staff Salary Adjustments. The Board of Trustees approve a 1.5% adjustment to the independent staff salary and wage rates for the 2018-19 fiscal year.
So moved.
I support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion, thank you. Very get over with this.
Chair McKinnon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Secretary American?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Yes.
We're going down to tab F. Board of Trustees approve the 2018-19 Part-Time Support Staff and Club Sports Coaches Salary. And I hear a motion.
Remove approval.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Vice Chair McKinnon, I'm sorry, Chair McKinnon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Secretary American?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Going down to tab G. Part-Time Faculty Wage Rates for 2018-2019. The Board approved the 2018-19 Part-Time Faculty Wage Rates as submitted. I hear a motion?
I move approval.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Chair McKinnon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Secretary American?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Tab H. 2018-2019 Department Chair Appointments. Board approved the attached 2018-19 Faculty Department Chair Appointments. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
I do, I just have a question. I remember there was discussion about having department chairs to rotate. Are many of these names still department chairs from past? And are there some of these new department chairs who have not the opportunity to be a chair?
Six new department chairs this year.
Six new ones?
Six new department chairs.
I'm sure they're indicated.
It's not indicated.
Oh, it's not, okay.
Want me to note them? Yes, would you please?
Yeah, if you don't mind, appreciate it.
Foreign language, math, business, allied health, health sciences, and nursing are all new department chairs. Okay. Anything else?
It's fabulous.
Thank you very much.
And how long do they usually maintain that seat?
So, department chairs are voted upon every year. So, every April, we vote on new department chairs.
Okay.
And they start when? July 1. July 1 through April. Okay, yes.
Were any department chairs voted by departments and then not approved by the administration?
No.
Good.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chair McKinnon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Secretary American?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to Financial Reports, May 2018. Recommendation, Board received the financial reports for May 18, 2018, as follows, General Fund, Deferred Maintenance Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule Investments, all funds. And that will be. Mr. Johnson?
Very good. So, you have the report before you, and the trend is as prior months is that revenue is going a little better than planned, both from a property tax and estate aid point of view. Summer registration has also been strong. And on the expense side, we are trending below budget. The personnel portion of that is trending a little above budget. And frankly, that's, I view that as a positive in that across campus, folks are filling those vacant positions at a little faster pace than what, than what we had assumed when we had set the revised budget. And I think that's, that's good news. A little bit of a negative against the budget, but that's more than offset by lower-than-expected spending on the direct expenditure, the non-personnel side. So, that overall, that the college is going to come in at or a little bit better than the revised budget.
Sounds good.
I'll move approval of the financial reports.
Thank you.
Support.
Okay. Any other questions? If not.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we go down to tab J. Vice President Allen, Facilities Development Report.
Okay, thank you. Facilities Development Report is contained in your packet. Of particular interest, I'd like to talk about the Advanced Transportation Center. That project was included in the state budget bill by the legislature and signed by Governor Snyder on June 21, Becoming Public Act 207 of 2018. It did contain the construction authorization for the Advanced Transportation Center, sorry. So, we are going to now move beyond preliminary design and get to work on building that $5.7 million project. We expect construction work would begin in the spring of 2019, with a potential completion of the building by the winter of spring of 2020. Further down the list, Project Number 9 for the Gundermeyer and Main Electrical Transformer Replacement. That project came in well below budget for the bid, so that will not come to the Board, and we'll be able to execute by August on replacing that transformer, which is grossly oversized for that building. Our bus loop will start to be repaired and replaced on July 9. And our parking structure was properly waterproof and reopened on time.
Any questions? Yes.
Do we figure in by 2020, what level of custodial maintenance we'll need for that building?
By that point, we'll have that figured out, and we'll make those adjustments in staffing if we need to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Remarks from the Board of Trustees. Anything exciting? Since the last month, over here.
I like, oh, go ahead, you go first. I actually have one thing. Last week, there was the annual Tech Trek in town that's sponsored by Spark, as well as many other organizations, I think even WCC's a sponsor.
Tech Trek.
Tech Trek. And they even had a tech talk this year, which was totally worth it. It was just one hour, and there were several speakers, it was formatted like a TED Talk, and it was a diverse set of speakers, men, women, people of all backgrounds, and it was really worth it. I encourage anybody to do it next year. And then the Tech Trek, they also had set up an automation alley for all the autonomous vehicles, and it was really cool to see it this year, it was the first year they did it. And it was just really neat to walk down that street and imagine that this was an Ann Arbor street of the future with all these cars on it, and it was really neat to see, so I hope they do it again next year. Where was this? Tech Trek was down, it was, it's kind of all downtown, like, what was it, William? On William Street was that one, and then where Spark is on Liberty was a check-in point, and then you go to Barracuda Networks is another check-in area, you kind of go all over.
And when is this?
It's in mid-June.
Mid-June?
It's an annual event.
It's an annual event.
How do you find out about?
This is probably the fourth or fifth year.
Yeah. I've never heard of it.
Well, it's new, newer, it's only been three or four years now, and this is the first year that I was really, really impressed that they had set up all this extra stuff.
Wonderful.
It was cool.
It is great. The whole purpose of Tech Trek was to encourage two things. One, companies to relocate to Ann Arbor. And secondly, for companies that are in Ann Arbor to get the talent that they need for these tech jobs. And you're right, and we have been a member of it. But thank you so much. That's great. They didn't go to Automation Street either, that would have been cool.
It was cool. And we had our car out there, it was really neat that we were there.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Kind of like fun.
Trustee Davis?
I just wanted to mention that I had the opportunity to attend the Adult Transitions Convocation Ceremony, and it was, it was really moving, and it was extremely exciting to see all those who have, who had attended their ceremony, and to hear the stories of the two young ladies that got on stage to share how their journey was in reaching their final goal of getting their GED and then moving on to post-secondary education. And I had gotten word that the attendance had grown much larger than the year, last year and years past. And I really give kudos to the staff and the faculty in that program. I don't know what the graduation success rate was, but it, to me, it seemed like it was just like 100%. If not, I'm just happy that all those that went through sacrificed having to work, having to raise a family, maybe even being caregivers, to sacrifice all the things that they had to do on the side to just finally get a paper. And that meant a whole lot to them, and it meant a lot to me, because I remember some of the things I had to do raising a family, and on work and all of that, just to get through school. So, I really applaud their efforts in making their dreams come true. And so, I hope and pray that their educational journey continues. So, that's all I wanted to say about that.
Did you want to say anything?
And well said.
Yeah, I think so. I just, I do want to say that Trustee Hatcher did a very good job in, in her speech to encourage everyone to get out and vote. I attended the Nurses' Penning, and that was just awesome. It was so interesting, so exciting to see how these people go about their ceremony. It was totally different than our regular ceremony, so I was really pleased with that. It was so, so, it was inspiring, with, some of them just bring tears to your eyes listening to their stories. But it was very, very nice, and a lot of people were there, and it was a lot of fun. I also want to say, last week, the college hosted a barbecue for students from Ypsilanti High School, and I think, you know, middle school, and their parents, or whoever their people that brought them to here. And Dean Jennings was there, and Mayor was there, and a few other, I mean, there was a lot of people. In fact, our vendors, quote-unquote, was the nursing staff. And it was just a lot of fun, because there was games set up, and there's, people could win things. But in the process of them winning, there was all these brochures for each department, and Vice President Hearns, and Vice President Blakey. I mean, it was just a lot of fun to see, the students had a great time. And there was plenty of food that was there, there's games, they won prizes, there was a tour for them, people signed up for that. And I happened to sit at a table with this young lady, she, just a real quick story, she was autistic, and I didn't realize that. Normally, I can spot it, but this time I didn't. And her stepfather sat next to me, and she left to go get some more brochures, and he said, "I just want to let you know that she's autistic, and she's looking at coming here to do this and that." And I'm like, I was just too thrilled, because she was, she's a higher level, and she was very inquisitive about asking questions. And just like all the students that were there, they were very excited to be there, and they were really talking about what was going on with the program. So, it was, I thought it was a well-done, you know, that was put on for the students and parents from Ypsilanti. It was well-attended, and there was a lot of people, not just from Ypsilanti, from Lincoln Schools and World War II schools, so thank you. Okay, President's remarks.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for approving my contract and for my salary recognition. And want to tell you what an honor it is to work here. And thank you so very much, it truly is. And all the successes that I'm able to share with you is really based on a few things, very important things. One is your support. Second is an amazing staff. I have a team, an executive team, that is on fire for everything. And like, just, they keep me hopping, and they're amazing. I have, I have, we have, I'm going to say I right now, because I'm the lucky one here. I faculty adminis, that we couldn't have any, we couldn't make, there's OERs that we talk about, that wouldn't happen. Increase in enrollment, that's just not about marketing, it's about good teaching, it's about good advising, it's about a flexible calendar, it's about a lot of things. So, I am the lucky one. You talk about the custodians and the maintenance, they, look at this place. I mean, they really care about everything they do. And when I meet with students, I have, they think it's a contest. It's not, because they all win. But they put their name in for this contest to have lunch with the President once a month. And, and we just have lunch and talk, and, and how many places do you know where people talk about how great the campus looks? That comes from students that are young, students that are noticing flowers and cleanliness, and it's just, it's remarkable. And the support systems that we don't see, the IT, the people that work in IT, the people that help us behind the scenes in everything, the media, everything here, everyone here works extremely, I'm going to say in a very, they work hard, but I'm going to say. But I'm going to say for the most part, 99.9%, they actually care. They actually care. And they actually care. And even if it sounds like a complaint, usually it's because they care. And it's their opinion, and it's because they care. So we are... I am very, very fortunate. So thank you so much for your support. And I assure you, I promise you, I will do a good job. Thank you. A few things that I would like to bring up quickly. Start with the Wash... That barbecue was really cool. The great thing about the barbecue, as you can see from this, Did You Know? Oh, I'm sorry. They were supposed... I was supposed to go and order?
No.
Okay. So what was great about it is that we realized today that it's not just about students. It's about their parents. Continuous learning. You know, we looked at that Did You Know? video. It's all about learning, ongoing learning. So we feel if we get the parents to come with them, we're not only going to help... The parents are not going to... It's not only a good opportunity for the parent to talk to their child, but it's also a good opportunity for the parent to think about what they might want to do. And there were two parents there that I happened to have the opportunity to talk to that were coming back. So that is really great. All right, I'll start at the beginning. I didn't know that these were going to go with me. Thank you. We had our signing yesterday. We have our third union partnership here on campus, and they are the Operative Plasters and Current... Wait, I'm sorry. Operative Plasters and Cement Masons International Association. Thirty-nine thousand members internationally. And yesterday was their signing. You see them on campus because this is their week on campus. We have 100 on campus. And that's Marilyn Dunham. Marilyn Dunham and Patrick. You know, everyone else that supports it, but these two, they are just really doing a great job in terms of meeting their needs. So that was yesterday. And we're talking to the roofers. Hopefully, we'll get them for the next year. And we want as many of these as we can get for quality. But the reason we want them is it's our way of saying to our community, it's a challenge for our college to do these because we have to clean around them, and you know what I'm saying? Usually colleges have a downtime, and we don't have much downtime. So... But we still get the things done. But it's such a great opportunity for us to learn and for us to give back to our community. Also, I'd like to thank Trustee Hatcher for the remarks at the convocation. And also talk about the youth fair that we had, which was amazing. We had 200 high school students that came and attended the Michigan Youth and Development Mentoring Career Program here at the college. I'd like to especially thank Dean Tucker for his inspirational remarks. Kimberly Dosey, the college coordinator, relations coordinator, and Lauren Downs for all their help, and the faculty and staff. We had an employer appreciation breakfast. Employer. These are people that hire our students. And Nico Dawson, great job on that. So thank you so much. Fifty employers attended the breakfast. They included General Motors and FedEx, Domino's, and Verizon Wireless are a few. Let's see. Young men of color had a graduation ceremony here. Clarence Jennings, that was amazing. And it was a very... It was hosted here. It was not our... It was not our graduation, but we are honored to have it here. And Clarence plays a very significant role in doing that. So thank you. We talked about Tech Trek. You're stealing my work. It's all my stuff here. And let's see. I think I... You know, the ironworkers are coming, July 20th, and that's exciting. So we'll be pretty busy pretty soon. They'll be coming to town for a week. Other than that, have a great Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a lot going on here, and especially with this new even coming on.
Is there something?
So we're going to go down to old business, and that will be the approval of the 2018-19 faculty sabbaticals. We did discuss this at our last board meeting. This is tab K. And this is the recommendation that we approve this. And so can I get a motion?
To move. Support.
Okay. And this is a roll call? Is this a roll call?
Yes.
Chair McKinnon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming.
Yes.
Senator American.
Yes.
Secretary Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
I just want to go over the names again. It's... One is for Mary Coral Burns in the nursing department. This will be in winter 2019. Kathleen Cook, physical therapy assistant, winter 19. Kim Jones, English department, winter 19. Kristi Norris, behavioral science department, fall 18. Juan Redondo, foreign languages department, fall 18. And Matthew Zecharias, digital media arts department, winter 19. Wish them well in their sabbaticals. Yes.
We don't hear from all the sabbaticals, but I'd like to encourage us to hear more of them. We've had a couple of them last year. Before that, we... The first two years I was here, we didn't hear any, so I'd like to keep hearing at least some of them.
Sure. Yes, I agree with that. We're going to go to tab L. Contract award for the lobby furniture upgrade project. I don't know if everyone remember from our last board meeting, we did get the information, and it was a discussion then at that time, and the furniture booklet. I asked the Nessa to pass it again, and I guess some people didn't want it again. But it's just a reminder of what it was. This is to approve the contract for K.I. of Green Bay, Wisconsin, as a supplier for the campus-wide lobby furniture replacement project in the amount of $177,531.81, contingent upon the college administration obtaining a satisfactory contract with the firm. Can I hear a motion?
Remove approval.
Support.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion. No, this is an action.
I know. It's allowed to be discussion.
Discussion.
Some of the pictures of the furniture show computers on the desks. Are we supplying the computers, or is that just a mock-up of what? Okay. I figured for $177,000, we weren't buying computers.
Well, they're getting cheaper.
You never know.
Any other? Okay. Roll call.
Chair McKinnon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming.
Yes.
Senator American.
Yes.
Secretary Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes. Yes.
And this one is the revision to the 2018 schedule of board meetings. This is for the board revise the 2018 schedule and hold a July monthly meeting on July 17th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. in the seminar rooms of the Health and Fitness Center at Washtenaw Community College located at 4833 East Huron River Drive. Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a roll call.